This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, 7:30 on the clock. How's it going, bud? Hi, I'm here. Rusty Eisenberg.
Hmm?
Rusty Almeyer.
Here.
Rusty Moser.
Here.
Rusty, where are you? Here. Professor Churchwell?
Here.
Director?
Here.
That's Andy. Director?
I'm here. I'm here.
Supervisor, we have room for business. Ellen, are you still with us?
I am.
Okay.
So. I've drunk.
Gail's on silence. Gail?
Yes, what do you need?
No, I just, we're asking if everybody could hear.
Okay. We're getting some feedback, so you want to ma- we want to mute some mics. I'm going to mute.
Okay.
Okay. Now, that's power, I'll tell you. Okay, the, our, Mr. Clark, you did say we had a quorum?
We do have a quorum for business, and Sandy's on and off, so you should join us when you get it to work done.
Because stuff happens. Okay. So, our first item would be to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Gail, you have your flag. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Sorry. Is there? I guess I should ask, is there any public comment? Because last time, I didn't know that anyone was here besides us. Okay.
There's a Julie Robins on, on site there? Or on the, on the screen?
It's Elliot.
Really?
That's Elliot?
Elliot.
But there's two of them. Okay.
He has, he's making sure his vote counts. I don't, I don't know.
He's talking, but we can't hear him, I don't think.
It's, he's mute. I, it's.
Julie opened up the second screen, it was a little bigger, but I told her to close it, I don't need it.
Okay. Okay. Now, I, I've received the minutes for the last couple of meetings. Have you all received such items? Okay, so. If so. Entertain a motion. To approve, wait, what's the first one here? The meeting, minutes of the meeting of February 25th, 2020. Is there such a motion?
Motion to approve the Board of Trustees meeting on February 25th, 2020.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The meetings of February 25th are approved. Next, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our March 24th meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Discussion.
Okay, well, let's get a second first. We got a second. Some discussions, I'm sorry.
You know, we, um, the spelling for David Hyser's name, it's H-Y-S-E-R.
Thank you, I'll correct that right away. Anything, any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? The minutes of March 24th are approved. And now I would ask a motion to approve the minutes of April 7th.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any, any opposed? If not, those minutes are approved, then thank you. Um. So now it's time for the supervisors to report. We continue to function effectively in a very unusual environment. And mostly that's due to the fact that we have a veteran staff that knows what they're doing and is doing it well. It would be a more difficult network if we were dealing with people who weren't as good at their job as these guys are. The pantry continues to function. Jean continues to interview people and make recommendations to the supervisor. And all the functions of the office, albeit on a limited schedule, are functioning well. And, and I'm very pleased to report that. I've had the opportunity to observe meetings of Niles Township, they've been, they're online, and talk to the people at Northfield. And both, both Northfield and Niles, while they're our neighbors, they function in a pretty different way. They're, first of all, much larger, their population sizes are much larger than ours. And the demographics of each of those townships are also very different. Their food pantry, for example, in each location is an order of magnitude greater than what we do on our worst day. Because it's not a good day if our food pantry is very busy, I think. That, they're just, their population size is just much larger, and their population of people needing a lot of the emergency services and things that we offer are much larger. Having said that, I am pleased with the way that we continue to function. I have here, wait a minute. Did, maybe Diane would know this, did Jeanie's summary get forwarded to all the trustees?
Uh, no, that just came in this afternoon.
And then I'll keep looking so I can read it to you, I'm sorry. I started.
I have a copy here, Ellen, should you want me to read it?
Yeah, if you could.
Sure. Okay. What Jean was addressing was the emergency assistance dispersments for housing, rent, and mortgage assessments. The recap she provided for the year 2021, which just was the end of our, our period, excuse me, February 29th, I'm on the wrong sheet, which was the end of our period for fiscal year 2020, was a total of $120,000, basically $800. And what she's saying is the dispersments were really, 77% of that are 157,342. Interestingly, and this is what's an important piece of information, is we, when we were talking, I asked her to do March and April, and for the period March 2020, just notwithstanding the fact that this all started to take place mid-March, she processed, processed $3,900 that were dispersed for, for two cases, which represented six people total. This was most likely, and I'm sure it is, was affected by being out for the two weeks she was in quarantine. However, she did work from home and work with that information with those people. In April, which the month is over as of this Thursday, she's already dispersed $20,968, which represents eight cases for 19 people. So, we're not even just two months into the fiscal year, and these dollars are, are growing. The discussion we had this afternoon, and we've had on many occasions the last couple weeks, is that those dollars are going to continue. The issue is the mortgage, and the issue is the rent. Right now, she made a note, she's saying, these do not include utilities or medical, but those are also dollars that will be used. And that's her recap for now.
Okay, thank you. Could you please make sure that everyone gets a copy of that?
Sure, sure will, sure will.
Diane?
Yes.
Diane, are those, are those funds coming out of General Assistance, or the Town Fund, or both? Do you know?
That's, that's all, emergency assistance is all out of the GA account.
That's right.
The GA houses the mercy's, emergency assistance and that.
Is there any way to line item over additional funds to GA if we need it? And/or has there been any discussion about a one-time drop like there was a few years back?
That drop happened in 2003, I believe, and there's been nothing subsequent to that. That question's been asked many times of toy, and many times, you know, throughout all the different townships. And from the lawyer, we also understand that that probably is not going to happen. But now that we're in this pandemic, I believe anything would be possible.
Is there any way to communicate? Is there any way to communicate that to Toy or whomever? That would be a favorable option?
We certainly could communicate it. I believe, Stefan, that we are one of the few townships in this, in this positive situation. As you all know, we always levy at the 0%, and we always get more dollars. It certainly works well, I'll make a note of that, and try to reach out. And see, see if there's any response to that.
Or maybe they could do it on an individual basis, per township. Those that can do, those that can't, don't.
Yeah, that would, I, I just don't know if that's even reasonable, if that, I don't know how they would accomplish that. But that certainly is a question we can ask, I can ask.
Our statutory responsibility, Stefan, is to meet every GA obligation. So, in the event that we were to run low in GA, we could, we would be required to transfer money to GA.
From our Town Fund? Directly from the Town Fund?
We, we'd have to support it, is what he's saying. We'd have to support the GA dollars regardless with the Town Fund dollars, because that's our, our obligation, and that's our.
That's our statutory responsibility. So. If, were we to need to do that, we would clearly do that. But I think we'll be okay. But, you know, how long this, we don't know. But i- if that becomes necessary, we do have funds to transfer.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, when I was telling you that I spoke with Northfield and, and Niles, I also, for just a difference in order of magnitude, I spoke to the people in Hanover.
Wow.
That's a, that's a whole state they're running over there. And any relationship. I was looking for, like, programs to see what we can adapt, or how people are running in unusual circumstances. There is no correlation between what they're doing in Hanover and our operation. It's, they're a township, and that's where the similarity ends. The size and order of magnitude, and the dollars involved, maybe are because they have a state senator as their supervisor, who knows? But there, it's a bit, it, I wasn't able to learn anything that I thought was of great value to us in trying to mirror. It, it's just, I was in, I've always known they did a lot more than we did, I had no idea how much more. You know, that, their senior center seems to be the size of North George Senior Center. I, I mean, it's just truly. It's different. So those were the three townships I had surveyed. Let me look here. Emergency response to the pandemic. We have, at our last meeting, we did pass a $5,000 authorization for school lunches for those receiving the free or reduced-priced lunches. $5,000 doesn't cover our obligation to the township. So we need to reconsider and figure out what we're going to do about it. Diane will fill in the numbers in a minute, but when we had Jean survey all the the social workers she works with on a regular basis, what, we were talking around $30,000 annually.
Right, a little bit, a little bit more than that, perhaps.
Okay, it, it was an order of magnitude different than what we had approved.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're talking, are you talking about, I'm sorry, to interrupt, Ellen. She was talking, to be exact, of 311 people, at $100 would be $31,100. The, the cards and that, that we distribute during the target days, or whatever, the cards for the people hovers around $25,000, $23 to $25,000 a year.
Okay. All right, so anyway, we have to reconsider what we get, because one, we can't single out one district. The other's the other is the amount of correspondingly much larger. I know Trustee Eisenberg made a suggestion that we consider POTS money. The, it is there. The only proviso I would put on that as we enter our discussions is that POTS was intended to be for program, not for, for a new kind of program, or something of that sort, or a new agency, or something different. Originally, for example, our place was funded through POTS. JJ's List was funded through POTS. These are agencies that provide a service, as opposed to what's funding an immediate need. And that was by design, because what we were doing when we created POTS, and I believe Stefan and I were the only two who were there when this happened, was to first off, it was created as almost a direct copy of programs in the Administration of Developmental Disability, a federal program, and there, they have a category called Program National Significance. So when we were, I, when I was flushing out and trying to find a name for this in such incredible originality, I just changed it to Projects of Township Significance. It wasn't intended to be, um, you know, because we ran short of money from somewhere, but rather, creating a new kind of program. That doesn't mean we can't change it, doesn't, I'm just trying to fill in some of the history of what POTS was for. So, now let's go at it. We, we have, if we're going to fund the lunches, and we had all agreed that that was, that was a good thing to do. We especially all agreed when we thought we were dealing with a $5,000 figure. The need is still there, whether it's $5,000 or more. So we have to discuss, one, if we're going to fund it for the entire township, and then where we're going to find the dollars from, and, and do it if that's still our will.
Just as a clarification.
What about the Angel Fund?
I'm, I'm sorry. But, and, and, yeah, we were, had originally said we would fund this out of the Angel Fund. You're, you're right, Elliot, and I believe we have enough still in the Angel Fund to do that. But I just thought we needed to discuss it again, because, again, we're dealing with an order of magnitude of difference, and we should all be aware of what we're doing.
Just to clarify, the $5,000 was always a starting POTS. And was going to be, when, and was always a fund for any student in Nutria Township who qualified for school lunch, for free or reduced lunch, it was never specific to any particular school district.
Well, I understand, the only numbers we had at, at the time, when.
Were from Evoca and Wasland, yes.
We didn't know what the rest was.
Right, and I'm, I'm certainly was shocked when I saw those numbers, because, you know, that was not the information we were, that we were given. But at this point, I'm going to move to increase the allocation another $30,000 for, to, to pay, to offer a $100 supplemental gift card for groceries to students in Nutria Township who receive free or reduced lunch, as defined under the federal.
Okay.
Gail, you want to say $31,100, right?
I said an additional 30, so we have 50 already has been allocated, I would do another 30 just in case.
Well, we, we really actually, to Elliot's point, is that we need like $26,100. And what, Gail, you're saying is to round it to $35,000?
For the total, yes.
We're adding $30,000.
You don't spend it, you don't spend it.
Has the $5,000 been spent?
No.
It hasn't been allocated so far?
No.
Okay.
We needed to find out how many people there were in the township.
Okay, my, that's my follow-up question. Do we determine if there are districts besides Willmet and Evoca that comprise the 310 families you mentioned?
Yes, Jean, uh, there, there was that, that email, I think it was sent, and this is probably a week or two ago, that includes the listing of all the findings she had, and the names of the people that were her contacts that she confirmed, and in fact, in many cases, she called back a second time to make sure, because there had been some question about a superintendent's numbers versus the people, uh, one of the contacts she had. So she's vetted those numbers.
And in terms of the payment of $100, what's our feeling about that? That's good for a week for one family, or a week for each person? And is that enough?
The, the intent was per person, because some families have one child or one person, and other families might have three children, so to say, per family.
And I would point out, Stefan, that any one of these families, by virtue of the fact that they qualify for the reduced lunches, or free lunches, is entitled to get food from our pantry, in addition, in addition to this program. This is specifically for the students, but if there's a greater need for these families, our pantry stands available to provide food to, we don't want anyone to go hungry. They, they can come to the pantry without a special allocation on our part.
Correct. And the conversations that Jean had, Stefan, with these people, and for everybody, was this is a one-time distribution of a card, similar to what takes place with the target cards, you know, the, it's not parallel, it's for a totally different reason, but it is similar, and these are the same groups of people and areas that are using that, and they, when Jean shared the information, they were quite, you know, quite pleased to hear that. But we're concerned, is it per family, per, per student? And I told her it's per student.
Jack, did you see that John needs to be led into the go-to meeting?
I'm sorry?
John is looking to get led in. Can you let John Thomas in?
I don't think Jack can hear you, Gail.
Well, he can hear, he just can't.
I can hear you. I'm just trying to find him right now on the, I'll, I'll try to take care of him.
Oh, John? What? Recovering from COVID-19.
He sent an email asking to be led in.
The reason I asked the question about the $100 allocation was because when we originally discussed it, it was supposed to be 20 meals at $5 a meal, round numbers, for one month. We're now going into our second half of the second month, with at least another month coming. So that's why I asked the question as to whether or not this was sufficient, coupled with the fact that schools are now closed until next year. So you really have to fulfill the needs of these individuals, at least until the end of the school year. And I have no idea how that program works in the summertime. But the gesture is well-taken, but I don't know that it's enough, or maybe it is. I'm just posing the question, because when we originally allocated it, we all thought we were under a 30-day stay-at-home order. That's now been doubled, and we don't know that that's the end either. And so, should we readjust our numbers based on that? Or just figure it's $100 for a family that needs, or individual who needs it? And that's the way it is, with the thought of perhaps revisiting the issue in 30 days for additional allocation?
And he was only with the thought of revisiting, that's at least how I saw it. With an un, with an unknown end dates to the, to the shelter in place. So I would certainly warn against, you know, waiting for the perfect solution when we have a, a solution that will make a big difference for many people.
Again, I would point out that all of these families, again, just by virtue of the fact that their child qualifies for free or reduced lunches, their family would be eligible to get much more food through, through the food pantry on a regular basis.
Of course, and they should be learning about the food pantry through their social worker. You're right, so, but this is, in a, in addition to the one bag of food they would be getting, now that we're doing the prepackaged food, you know, there's a lot more need from, you know, having a 13-year-old boy at home, or something like that. This is a recognition.
You're absolutely right, Gail. And under certain circumstances, we can give them more food.
Correct.
They, they speak with Jean, or with Brian, and we're not looking to store food. So as much as we have, I want to give out.
And, and to that point, an interesting statistic that I had Larysia then polled today, we've been tracking the number of visits, and over this period of time, as of today, there has been 170 visits, and that represents, I believe she said, 49 households. We have a total of 150 households, so we're really looking at about 30, 32.6, 33% of what we usually serve.
It's very concerning.
Yes, it is. We promote it, we reach out to people routinely, we share the information. We've got, do have people, and that's one of the statistics I want to find out, is who are these other people? We talked about this last time. But it is, we're sitting at about a 30 to 32% at least right now. So. To that point.
We reached out to all of our regular clients.
Yes, we have. And we do, and Jack, we have that on the internet, I mean, on the website and on the internet all the time, so.
And we, in, in the dispatch and in the courier, we, we talk about the pantry a lot.
Does Brian or Diane, do you have any opinions as to why we have this drop-off?
I believe, this is a personal opinion. It's not that, well, of course, there's always people, ways we could say, how else do we let people know? I believe people are afraid. I believe the extension of this, of this pandemic, you know, and, and not knowing what, what people are doing. And people are worried, they're just not, they're just not going out. And people are worried. They're just not, they're just not going out. Is that what the case is? I'm sure there's other reasons. But the people who do come are able to get here and they're able to, if they can't get here, they have other people come. So there is that ability. So I, to answer that, my opinion is that people are just right now sitting tight.
I think, I think that makes sense. Now, my question is this, and I'm not saying we should, but if hypothetically we could drop off the food to those that are afraid to come out, would they be needing and accepting of that food? I mean, is that maybe the missing piece of work that we need to consider providing?
We have that with the Meals on Wheels. We went through this with the Meals on Wheels and the volunteers, the $10,000 that we had given to them for support. Jean's been in contact with them, I believe Brian has too. And the issue, at least I know of, the last time I heard of an update, is that they are trying to vet volunteers. They're trying to get people who are available. There is a process just to send someone that, someone reaches out to you on the internet or onto email and just send them over. They need to have those people vetted. We refer people there all the time. I mean, even Meals on Wheels is showing up everywhere. So. And Meals on Wheels is happy to do that. But right now they have the, you know, the kitchen, remember the repair of the kitchen and that. So I think that is, that is a piece, but we don't have the vehicles. We don't have the, we have a liability. We don't have any of that or the numbers to do so. But it's a good point.
We also have another agency, well, the Volunteer Center might be able to step in in some capacity. But I guess my question is this, the 67% that aren't showing up, are they A, afraid of pantry food altogether during the pandemic? They don't want pantry food? Or B, they just have no way of getting to the pantry or they're afraid to come to the pantry? Or is there some third reason that we haven't considered? I'd like to know if there's some way we can poll that 67% to find out why they're not coming.
Absolutely. And it's not because I asked Brian about that. If people weren't making it to the pantry, and he basically said if they, that it's a choice for them to get food at the food pantry. And that was just upsetting. No one's deciding, you know, this is not a real choice. You have food and health and we have ways to get them the food. You know, I understand that Meals on Wheels has a much more serious process. I tried going through it myself and I didn't even have all the information I needed in order to get my background check to do it. But at the same time, if somebody needs the food and they ask for, to be paired with someone, you know, that's an assumption of risk on their part. I don't see how this would, how it would be a problem for us to pair a pantry client with one of the many volunteers that are asking to drive people either to the pantry or to grab them their food.
People are driving food all over the place. They're coming with, they're boxing up food. It's happening all over the country.
Right. And Gail, I think you're referring back to that list that you had provided to Jean and that she had sent on to the Meals on Wheels, correct?
Yes, and she did send that on because we, as you might expect, we're, you know, we had great outpouring of people who wanted to help, but no one asking for help because it's probably not the same people he informs. But.
Correct. And if we.
We survey all of our existing food pantry clients. And the simple question, if we were to be able to get you the food, would that be helpful? And then we can go from there. I mean, we have surveyed them and they're still not showing up a lot.
That's right.
Again, my goal with the pantry is to have empty shelves because we give everything away and then we'll replenish.
And we're fortunate with the donations we're receiving very, very much. So.
Yeah, right. So we're not doing, we're not knowingly doing anything to keep people from getting food. It just doesn't do us any good to let it sit there.
No. And Elliot, to your point about are they concerned about the pantry food? I can't even imagine.
People are afraid of the virus there and all this other stuff that frankly, we can't control. But the things we can control is to keep asking them if we were to be able to get you the food, would that be useful? And I, and we'll do that. We'll re-survey all of our food pantry clients and ask them.
I would like to make a suggestion.
Fulfill that question, but.
Exactly. Alan, before you go asking people whether they would accept delivery, you need to set up your delivery system so that you don't have people with an unrealistic expectation of something that we can't take care of.
Well, it's kind of like the right stuff and it's like a chicken or an egg. I've been making the assumption that Meals for Wheels or Meals on, whatever it is, that they would be more able to get it going right away. And because that was their, what they told us was they would be able to use their volunteers to deliver some of the food. And that was, if that's the case, then that's where we would go. But they're having some startup issues. You have interviewing and vetting volunteers and all of that. But the first thing we need to know is how many people we need to get food to.
Then we can ask that question and revet that. Gail, you were talking about the pairing the people up. That list is, has been with Meals, excuse me, with Meals on Wheels. I think to revisit all these people and ask them the question, we would then get a sense of the down, or the number of people that are interested and then we could assess that and go from there. If indeed Meals on Wheels is up and running or available to do that.
And if they're not?
Well, Stephen, we need to find out about the need. I think that we'll find volunteers. I'll put on a mask and pair of gloves and I'll be happy to drop off bags of food all over the township.
Before we start sending out volunteers, I mean, I could drop off food for people too willingly. But it's, we have to check with our lawyer and make sure about liability and stuff.
I mean, you could also check with those other townships since they're all doing, you know, drive, you know, they have pop-up food pantries going, they've got drive-throughs, they've got, you know, all sorts of different things that they're pulling off right now.
Like Niles does have, they've set up a drop, a secondary pantry at the Morton, no, I'm sorry. I believe it's the Morton Grove Police Station.
But a drop off, but a drop off site doesn't solve the issue we're discussing, Gail, where we're talking delivery.
They have a satellite food pantry.
Yeah. So they're having volunteers there who are necessarily employees.
Size of their customer base for their pantry is an order of magnitude larger.
I'm not saying that we need to have a secondary pantry. I'm just saying that they are using volunteers. And if that means that they probably have either already addressed the issue of liability or they have found that it wasn't worth addressing.
I don't know that it would be a huge problem, but I think we should check with our lawyer first just to make sure that we're not putting volunteers at risk for something.
Right. I think the first step is for us to revisit and reach out to the people.
And then we'll figure out a way to get them the food.
Okay.
I mean, another possibility is then in these times, they're going to a different pantry and they're getting even more robust offerings than we provide. If they're getting their food elsewhere, that's a possibility. But we need to know so we can plan accordingly.
Agreed.
Yeah. And so we'll do the survey. We could start doing that tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Yep, I've got that. Okay.
Is there a second to my motion?
I mean, we've been discussing all this without a second.
I second Gail's motion to increase from 5,000 to 35,000.
That was 30,000.
I thought it was.
31,100, but we want.
I thought we stayed up to a number and then if we don't get there, that's.
Yes.
And you guys know how I feel about this. This is a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. We've got the money. $100 will make a big difference to these families. Could make a significant difference. If you don't spend extra money now, I don't know when you're going to spend.
Well, nobody's, nobody's arguing about that. It's where it's going to come from and stuff like that. We're not, nobody's saying not to spend the money.
What kind of balance do we have at the Angel Fund?
I'm sorry?
I can't hear you. I couldn't hear you.
Ballpark funding in the Angel account right now?
Ballpark as of March was about 135,000 rounded dollars.
So we could do it.
We can do it.
And that we don't run into the problem John was raising about.
Correct.
Yeah.
As a follow-up question, how do they get those cards? Do they have to come pick them up? Are we mailing them out?
We're going to, we've already, I've already discussed this with Jean, who handles this directly. It's going to be mailed out directly. If someone wanted to pick it up, they would let her know, which is the protocol that we do in the past. In the past, however, we've used the case managers and that at the different agencies. That's not an option anymore because those people do not want to be exposed, if you will, for whatever reason. So.
Diane, just a little caution.
I would ask that Jean make sure or reinforce to the social availability of your pantry for the whole families.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was getting feedback. Could you say it again, Alan?
Look, I don't know that it needs to be in the motion, but we'll make sure that Jean communicates to the social workers where we got all these numbers is that the food pantry is available for those families. And they can get more food than what these, the cards are a gift to the kids. And that we're going to do. But I would feel better if the families would avail themselves of the food we have in the pantry. They qualify right now.
Correct.
By virtue of their kids being in these programs.
All right. I'll have her restate that because she and I had this discussion and she did advise the people she worked with. And she said that they were, you know, gracious and that type of thing. We'll have her reiterate that point.
We can't force people to come and take the food.
No, no.
Know that we did everything we could do so that they know it's available.
Right. Agreed. I'll take care of that.
Not to micromanage it, but if we could do like a cover letter to say, these are the resources that are available at the township.
Yeah, she doesn't usually buy, she usually does it by email or that kind of thing. A question, are we, before you guys agree on this, what are we adding? Is it going to be a total of $35,000, which will cover, that's an additional 30? That will cover the 31,100. And if there's other ones, that'll give us some wiggle, flexibility.
Yeah.
Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes. And Gail from Angel Fund as opposed to Potts from Angel Fund?
Yes.
Angel Fund.
A word of caution, if I might.
John's issue.
Diane, I want to advise you of something, and that is you have to be very careful sending gift cards in the mail because if it's obvious that it's some kind of a gift card, they are being swiped up like crazy out of the US mail. So you've got to somehow camouflage that card so that it's not obvious that that's what it is. Because if that is what it is, they will disappear.
Right.
I'm speaking from personal experience, so that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. We didn't even talk about certifying them, but we need to be working with the people. These are, they're going to so that they're aware of that because the different, we may be able to group them. I don't know. I, we've got, I've got to talk to Jean and see how we're going to do this.
Yeah, jiffy bags or something that doesn't, I don't know.
Brown envelope.
The cards that Christmas time.
Right. And there were ones that were, and that's different. And that's where we're going to have this problem, how do we get to the people? Because when she does that, she does it in batches and then we have to sign off. We have a, I have Larisha do a, you know, a listing so that we have documentation by number of card, where the card's gone to, who it was distributed to. And if it's distributed in batches, then there's a sign off. So those are issues we have to work through in this. But thank you, Stephen.
All right. If we discuss this, that, or not, that's a wrong thing. If we're ready, let's vote.
Okay.
Motion's been made, seconded, discussed.
Could it be repeated?
Is to appropriate 30.
Five.
What was the amount, Diane?
35,000 total.
Up to $35,000 from the Angel Fund.
Not in, yeah, not in addition to the 5,000 from before. It's a, this is an update.
Yeah. Okay. So all in favor? This is a voice.
It's got to be a regular vote.
Do a roll call. Make sure that everybody's on board. But it wouldn't be a voice vote?
No, it's a money. It's money.
Yeah, so that, I meant roll call. That's what I meant. I was saying. Okay. I'm sorry. Hey, Gail?
Yes.
Chrissy Moser?
Yes.
Chrissy Robbins?
Yes.
Supervisor Goldberg? Yes. She unanimous. Hey, Jack, is, John didn't join, right?
No, I resent him an invitation and I'm still not seeing him in the waiting room. So I.
Mentioned that he had some fairly extensive dental work today and he had sent me an email that he wasn't sure he'd be able to join us.
I just didn't want to leave them all in case.
Right.
Yeah, we're just responding to his email that he sent to all of us.
Okay, I didn't know that it was.
I resent him an invitation, but I still haven't seen him come into the waiting room. I've been looking at the controls. I don't see him out there waiting. So.
Okay.
Okay, so that's. Is there any old business?
We have an update on digital fundraising from Diane.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What? An update on what?
We have an update on the digital fundraising abilities on our website.
Oh, you're talking about with Civic Plus? Yes, Jack had asked me that about four days ago. I told him I don't have an update at this point. We have the program being, it's been approved and we're having it being installed. As soon as I have an update, I will let everyone know.
Did Civic Plus give you an ETA?
No, they did not.
Okay.
Sooner the better was our request.
Any new business?
I'm pleased to report that the peer jury application process is completed. Brian sent out the essays that were submitted to the youth advocates for us to rank. The essays were all excellent. I think it's going to be one award this year. The candidate is somebody, I don't know, Brian will make that final decision, but he's been with the program for four years and his attendance is perfect. He's a wonderful peer juror. But I think this is one of those years, last year was exceptional. We had three great candidates, equal in all respects. I think this year we're going to have a single peer juror win the scholarship and more details will follow shortly.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We need to set our next meeting date. How about the 19th of May?
Shall we stick with our regularly scheduled May 12?
I cannot make it May 12. Why can't I? Why is that? Let me see. Why can't I? Why is that, that up? Let me see. Oh, I, I can make it. I, I'm, I have, it's la, it's in the morning. Okay.
Yes.
So make. I just. And then if we need an additional meeting, we'll set it at that time. Okay. So if there's nothing else, suggest a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all. Got it. Another month. I'm going to actually, I'm zooming. I'm going to meeting. I'm doing what's that other one? Disco Webex and I never knew what these words were about a month ago. Now I'm using them on a regular basis. So I may even understand them in a month. Okay.
I just want to, I just want to say, um, Diane, if you get feedback on what's going on with that 67%, if you can just send us out an email so we can get our juices flowing with ideas on how we can maybe address that, that would be wonderful. And I also want to, uh, I miss you guys. I want to see you in the flesh. But I want everyone to stay healthy.
Yeah. Yeah, that it's, it's, it's the dilemma we're facing all around the, all around the state this year. So, okay. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Night.
Night.
Good night.
Maybe. Kind of like get out of here. So.